Gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting of the Faculty Staff and Administration Committee to order. We will have a slight change in the order, which we'll discuss after we move through the agenda. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of June 4th, 2012. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries.
Abstention?
Yes. Abstention.
Voice not present.
Okay, take this. Because the chancellor has a current commitment, I'd like your permission to move to item 1C6, the appointment of a professor with immediate tenure with a bylaw waiver at the new community college. Because of the nature of the discussion, we will ask that we have to go into executive session.
We should probably have a motion.
Oh, can I have a motion?
Motion is second.
So, extra apology. We'll ask Provost Jose Luis Moran to present his item.
We have to get the gallery.
Well, he has to present it.
People have to leave for the audience.
Well, he has to present it, then he has a motion, second, then the discussion is an executive session.
Okay.
You can present.
Good evening. I'm here to present the case of Professor Laura Gambino, who comes from--
To say case of Gambino, in a sentence, doesn't sound right.
Just the appointment with immediate--
Appointment, appointment of Professor Gambino. We're here to discuss her appointment in the context of a waiver request. Professor Gambino comes from Hunter's Community College.
We don't need to just say what the, what motion you're presenting.
So, the motion that is being presented is to have her become his full professor, his tenure to the new community college.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we move to go into executive session.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion?
No, we need to go to the second.
Now, we'll go to executive session for discussion. Thank you.
Does he stay, or does he--
Thank you for your, everyone's patience. The motion has been moved in second for the appointment of Laura Gambino as professor with tenure. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. We will now continue on with our agenda items. We will ask President Karen Gould if you will come to the table to present amendments to your governance plan.
She can stay.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In summary, the amendments to the governance plan of Rockland College as presented have been designed to address the creation of four new schools with four new deans. So, we have now moved to a five-school, five-dean structure, and we needed to make sure that our governance plan reflected these changes. And so, each of these items reflects that, and also reflects, interestingly enough, the-- if you have the document in front of you, I don't have a page number, but making sure that at the CAP Committee on, the committee, excuse me, I'm looking for my page, the Committee on Academic Administrative Policy, the CAP, making sure that the number of administrators on that voting body never exceeds the number of department chairs. This was an issue, and I wanted to assure them that it was not President Gould's intention of taking over power from them to express their views. And so, we struck a nice balance, and everyone is fine with this. But I can't imagine we would ever have more administrators than department chairs. We would never have the funding. In any event, this transpired very nicely, and I think the faculty, the chairs are very supportive of this, and it's simply to essentially bring the governance document up to speed with where we actually are and how we function.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Professor Gould, would you stay there?
Yes.
Because I think you have another item on the agenda.
I do. Thank you.
She could just stay there, and we'll get to that later, and then just continue.
Okay. Okay. Provost Chase Robinson, would you please come and present item 1B2? Amendments to the governance plan of the graduate school.
Thank you very much. Not nearly as interesting as the amendments that just were approved. These are really one or two exceptions entirely uninteresting changes that are designed principally to bring the document up to date. The amendments were approved at the Graduate Council on May 10th, 2012. The amendments clarify functions of the Graduate Council, most notably stating that its role is to formulate educational policy for graduate work in the doctoral programs that are resident, that are in the graduate center, rather than those that are elsewhere. They also codify a number of current practices, including the two-year term of the chair of Executive Committee of the Graduate Council, updating the names of certain committees, allowing voting by email and other electronic means. Finally, they specify, and then the Graduate Council will be specified in the Graduate Council bylaws regarding the governance plan. Not terribly interesting.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. President Jennifer Robb. Welcome.
I'm part of the faculty.
We'll present items 1B, 3, 4, and 5, three names associated with Hunter College. We will vote on these as a group at the end.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your consideration. I'm extremely pleased and actually moved on behalf of Hunter College to request the board's approval of the naming of the Clara and Larry Silverstein students' success and the Clara-Larry Silverstein Library lobby at Hunter College. This is a naming in honor of a $5 million gift from Larry Silverstein in honor of Clara's 10, 11-year service as our board chair. Mrs. Silverstein is stepping down, remaining on the board, but stepping down as chair, and her family wanted to honor her as part of the major renovation of our library. The Silversteins are obviously a major real estate family in New York City. Mrs. Silverstein graduated from both Hunter College, and then received her master's in education, and has been very dedicated, as has Mr. Silverstein, to Hunter's success. So, we're very excited to have this gift for our library renovation.
Thank you. You can continue.
The second gift is a $125,000 gift to Hunter College High School, also in honor of an alum, Mrs. Whitman Hauser is her name. And this, Mrs. Hauser graduated from the high school and then the college in the 1940s. And one of her relatives was longtime high school librarian, Harriet Alsis of Hunter College High School, has actually had the honor of her being my high school librarian. She was also a graduate of Hunter College, and she organized a number of the Whitman Hauser family members to do something in honor of Mrs. Hauser in the library. So, the $125,000 allowed us to do a significant renovation at the high school, and we had a ceremony in honor of the family.
Thank you.
And the final gift is also, is also a lovely story of something that we've been trying to do at the college, which is to engage the neighbors of Hunter College to support our students and our mission. And Corinne Barsky is just a lovely New Yorker, committed to the city, a wonderful philanthropist with many, many interests. And one of the most lovely things about her, as my colleague, President Mello knows, who also knows her, she lives in the Carlyle Hotel, so she likes to call herself the modern Eloise. So, she became very close with us and started to attend many of our Roosevelt House events, and wants to do something to support our programming. Made a $100,000 charitable annuity gift, as well as a $25,000 gift to the public broadcast station WNET, which will allow us, in conjunction with another $25,000 gift, to complete the documentary that WNET is doing on the house, and will be airing later this month. So, she's been a wonderful, friendly supporter, and we are naming a lounge area and mezzanine in her honor, be the Corinne Barsky mezzanine, in honor of that $100,000 charitable gift annuity. So, I respectfully request the support for these naming.
Second? I have a motion for approval of the three items.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Stay, Jennifer.
Everything's going to be sitting at the table in a minute. There are two additional policy items that normally would have been reviewed by the Committee on Academic Policy, Program, and Research, but due to the cancellation of that meeting and the time-sensitive nature of the matters, we have agreed to review them. Both concern the bestowing of honorary degrees. I will ask President Robb to present the first item, honorary degree, and I will let her say who it's for.
The honorary degree that we are so excited to request permission for will be to the current Dalai Lama, and I think Vice Chancellor Waters has the correct, his correct name, so may I defer, because we--
Oh, well. I do not suggest that I would pronounce it correctly, but it's Tenzin Yahtso, I believe, the 14th--
That's perfect.
The 14th Dalai Lama. Thank you.
Really?
Right. So, I'm very, I thank you, I thank you very much.
Oops, sorry. I thank you very much for that. We were extremely fortunate, a number, a couple of years ago, one of our faculty members, who the board has recently met, because he became a distinguished professor about a year ago, Peter Kwong, has very active relationships in China, and got to know the Dalai Lama. Dalai Lama is very interested in creating relationships with Chinese and Chinese-American students and faculty. So, we did a significant event for him about two years ago. He became very engaged with the college, and we requested, and his staff and supporters have arranged for us to have him back again. And we will be doing a number of events with him again, mostly focused on his meeting with Chinese scholars and Chinese and Chinese-American students, both from throughout CUNY. So, last time, we extended our, the invitation. It was wonderful to have the support of my colleagues, as well as Columbia and NYU. So, once again, he wants to come to speak about relationships with the Chinese and Chinese-American community in New York, to talk about his vision of peace and justice in the world. He is an extraordinary spiritual leader, and we're very lucky that he has agreed to accept with the board's approval an honorary degree from Hunter College. So, one of the events will be our bestowing such a degree upon him.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. President Meiskins? Welcome.
I'm here.
You are to present your honorary degree candidate?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. This is the 75th year of Queens College. We're celebrating our anniversary, and we're going to have quite a spectacular convocation on October 11th. And the reason it's October 11th is that was the day of the first classes. They were delayed because of the painter's strike. So, on the 11th, we decided we would like to give an honorary degree to someone who is truly special, a graduate of Queens College, someone who would exemplify the qualities of CUNY and Queens. And we settled on Professor Dr. Dennis Leota. He is a chemist at Emory. He has his PhD actually from the Grad Center, and a bachelor's from Queens. He is one of three people who developed an anti-AIDS, HIV medication that's used by 94% of the people who need it in the United States. As a result of their work and the technology transfer to pharmaceutical industry, they brought in $540 million to Emory. Some of that going to them, but some of it going back for research at Emory, perhaps the largest such example. I say that because what's impressive about him is he decided to follow the motto of Queens College, "We learn, and we may serve." And since that time, this was in the late 80s when they developed this, got a patent in 2003, he has dedicated his life to working in sub-Saharan Africa, where he's fighting three scourges, malaria, tuberculosis, and HIV infection. And what he's doing is making sure that the scientists there, people there, the medical people, know how to do research and use these medications. So, for his philanthropy, for his exacting nature in science, he's a wonderful human being, we wish to offer him the highest honorary degree at this convocation.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And this completes our policy calendar. Now, we'll move to the chancellor's university report items. President Joseph, please join us to present item 1C1, an appointment at Bronx Community College.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, it is my pleasure to present to you a candidate, Dr. Athos K. Brewer, for the position of Vice President of Student Affairs at Bronx Community College. I'm very pleased to be able to recommend Dr. Athos Brewer to the position of Vice President for Student Affairs. He is the result of a national search, and five candidates were forwarded to me, and after all the interviews and the selections, interviewed all of them. He brings a lot of experiences in community colleges in the area of student affairs, having served as a senior administrator, and most recently as dean of students at the largest campus of Northern Virginia Community College. He holds a PhD in Education Technology from American University, a master's in education in counseling from the University of Dayton, and a bachelor's degree, bachelor's in arts in international studies from Capital University. I am very confident that with Dr. Brewer, we will be able to really revitalize our student affairs division.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Congratulations, and welcome to City University of New York.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will ask President Lisa, who's already here.
Yes.
Yeah, you can stay, President Joseph, because I know you have another one, but you can just say that President Lisa, you're next.
Thank you.
Everybody's going to be sitting at the table.
We're all, I was gonna say. Okay, we'll all move down one. Okay, switch. Thanks.
All right.
Yeah, just stay, it's fine.
It is, good evening, and thank you. It's truly a pleasure this evening to introduce to you Ira Crowitz, who has been appointed to serve as the acting president, Vice President for Communications and Marketing at City College. Ira has extensive experience in marketing, promotion, and branding, and he worked most recently as a marketing consultant, and was previously in charge of global marketing at PR News Wire, the International News Distribution Service overseeing advertising, public relations, marketing, and the website, also contributing to the expansion of the user base. His previous positions also include his being director of both the American, marketing at both the American and New York Stock Exchanges. Since he's been in here, he has jumped in, he's been excited, he's been meeting with all of the deans, and it's been wonderful. So, it's been just such a pleasure, just such a pleasure, so.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Welcome into your new, but almost old, capacity here at City University.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining. Thank you. Appointment of Ira. Oh, that was, I was kidding, I'm sorry. I was going to do it again. President Travis.
This time, I will move down.
Oh, there are mics at everything, so. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm pleased to come before you today to introduce Tom Stafford, Dr. Stafford sits to my left, and to request your approval and support of his appointment as our interim Vice President for Student Affairs. Let me just, this is an unusual request in the following sense, that our previous Vice President for Student Affairs took a position in California at a time when the dean of student position was becoming vacant at John Jay, and the director of student life position at John Jay was becoming vacant. So, I was in consultation with some people in the student affairs world, who said, "Why don't you see if there's somebody on the national scene, national expert, who might recently have stepped down from another position, who might want to come to John Jay on an interim basis?" And boy, were we lucky. So, we found Tom Stafford. Tom Stafford is, comes to us from North Carolina, was the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs in the, at the North Carolina State, held that position for 30 years, and literally retired the week before he started at John Jay. Talk about getting lucky, right? So--
They told me I flunked retirement.
So, Dr. Stafford comes to us with significant experience, obviously, at North Carolina State, but also at the national level. He's known in this world as somebody who's made a number of presentations and published widely on issues of retention and diversity and student life. His PhD from Florida State University in higher ed administration, master's from North Carolina State in counseling, and a BA in psychology. Also particularly fortuitous is that Dr. Stafford has served on some national commissions on issues of veterans' affairs, and has advised our Defense Department on those issues from a student perspective. So, chancellor, as you may know, recently asked me to chair the Adult Committee on Student, Veterans Affairs, and so I have at my, I can say my right hand, literally now my left hand, somebody who has thought about these issues from a global perspective. So, Tom's been at John Jay now for, since the summer, and has been just a welcome colleague, and we wish that we could persuade him to put his hat in the ring, but that might not happen, but I'm delighted to present him to this committee for consideration.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. You can now amend your resume.
Have I been granted permission to continue my work?
You've been granted permission.
And I'd like, I'd like the board to know that I brought my motto from NC State, "Students First," and it's now on a John Jay.
Oh.
And I'd like to return the compliment. One of the reasons I came here, after 41 years at North Carolina State University, is because of this guy right here. He's an outstanding leader in higher education, and it's a real pleasure to work with him.
Well, congratulations. I have a feeling you won't be in retirement long, I think you're-- Thank you very much. President Gail Mello, will you present item 1C4, appointment of a provost at LaGuardia Community College?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure and honor to present Paul Arcario for the position of provost and senior vice president for academic affairs. He, it's interesting when you have someone who's really from the institution, and you have a moment to look at their qualifications. When Paul got done teaching in Taiwan for two years at the early part of his career, he basically came to CUNY, and we are lucky that he did. He is an extraordinary educational leader, probably the most brilliant academic mind in terms of understanding the connection between learning and assessment that I know of. He is responsible single-handedly for many of the academic programs for which LaGuardia is renowned, the e-portfolio process for which we are national leaders, the way in which our assessment is connected to e-portfolio. He has been named, John Gardner actually is a nationally known individual in terms of helping students with the first year. LaGuardia is going to participate with the rest of CUNY to really look at how to enhance the first year. Paul, about five years ago, was named their, I want to call you the national first-year person, I can't find it in here. He's single-handedly brought in about $14 million in grants and contracts to LaGuardia in sort of every way, in the, and it's everything from him speaking Chinese to Wellington Chen a moment ago, to his ability to understand the complexities of managing a very diverse academic world, and his new challenge to really think about how do we bring together student affairs and academic affairs in a way that really makes student affairs part of the learning process, as opposed to simply a function of registration. In every way, Paul has stepped up to this position and is a leader, certainly at LaGuardia, and I think in the state and in the nation, so it is my pleasure to present him to you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Pollard, come on up.
And I appreciate everyone's indulgence as we go through this pretty large agenda in a more accelerated pace, but we wanted to make sure that this being the first meeting of the year, we're able to get through all of the items while we have a quorum, so you appreciate, while I've been a little bit hasty tonight. Thank you. President Pollard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and to the other members of the committee. I take delight at this time to present to you Earl Cobell as Senior Vice President of Finance Administration, Chief Operating Officer. Earl has been with the college for the past two years, and has served nobly in a discapacity in a variety of capacities. He is an individual who knows how to work from the ground up, and that is what I admire most about him. He does not mind getting his hands dirty. Perhaps it is his auditing background that enables that. He is a New Yorker. He is a proud graduate of the MCC, and he also has an MBA degree from NYU. Prior to coming to New York, he served in a variety of capacities in the finance area, including Washington DC, where he was interim CFO, has worked with the city government of Richmond, Virginia, and I take delight in presenting to you, him, to you at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries, and congratulations, and--
Thank you very much.
--and continuation of-- Moving to Dr. Meiskins. He's already at the table. Will you present item 1C7?
Yes.
Betsy? Musical chairs here.
Yes, thank you very much. It's a real honor for me to be here to present to you Elizabeth Hendry as the interim Vice President, of course, of teaching, planning, enrollment management, and administrative operations at the college. We'll add a few others as well. Some of you know that a number of my senior people move on to presidencies elsewhere, and so we had some key roles that needed to be filled, and Betsy stepped forward to do it. Betsy is an economist by training. She actually was one of the first persons I worked with when I became president at Queens, because I wanted to develop a Bachelor of Business Administration, a BBA, and so I very quickly learned her academic values, and learned that she was highly respected by the--